Okay, let's call to order the committee of the whole meeting for Tuesday, November 7th. It is 7:30 PM. First item on the agenda is roll call, please.
Brusato?
Here.
Atak?
Here.
Stark?
Here.
Chantet?
Here.
Wolf?
Here.
Salvati?
Here.
Brown?
Here.
O'Brien?
Here.
Callahan?
Here.
Meitzler?
Here.
Malley?
Here.
Uwe?
Here.
Serone?
Here.
And McFadden?
Here.
Okay, let the record reflect that all 14 of the aldermen are present for this meeting. And could I remind everyone before we get started to pull the microphones up close to them so that we can get everybody on the mic. Next item is item two, items removed, added or changed. Laura, do we have anything?
No.
Anybody else have anything? Okay. Item three matters from the public for items that are not on the agenda. If there's anybody in the public that would like to address us for an item that is not on the agenda. Okay. Item four is Resolution 17-111-R, authorizing execution of a task order number four with Power Systems Engineering Group for professional service engineering related to the Highland electric improvements for an amount not to exceed $25,955. Alderman Wolf?
This is Public-
Or Alderman O'Brien?
Public Utilities?
Alderman O'Brien.
Him too.
Well, we have, at the Northeast Substation, the, as in the memo says, we have a couple of generators or transformers. One is 30 years old, it's at its end of life, and we'll be looking to replace this. I was talking with Gary, we're trying to put this on some sort of a system that yearly we'll be doing these task order contracts, just to try to maintain our redundant system through the area. And so, I'll leave it at that. Gary, you want to fill us all in on?
Sure, I'm gonna, well, I'll go skip to, that was number five. So I want to, I'll, we'll skip number four for a second.
Okay, I'm sorry.
That's okay. If it's okay, we'll talk about that one, since you've already started to introduce that one.
Yeah, that'll be great.
That's number five. That's the, the Power Systems Engineering, designed for a new distribution substation. Over the course of this year, I've shared with you several emails and several updates as to what's been happening with our Paramount substation. If you guys recall, we had failure out there this year, we've had failures out there in the past. Many of you won't recall back in about eight years ago, we had a major failure, just like we had this year, where the substation went offline for, for several weeks. So that substation's nearing the end of its life, at least one of the transformers is. And when we built the 138 substation, we left room out there, extra room. So, we're gonna build a new 12 KV substation in that facility, which was designed for it. That'll allow us to then go into the Paramount facility and take out the old transformer, which is near, or really basically at its end of life, and rehab the other transformer. That'll all occur, really over the years, 2018, 2019. So this is the first contract for design of the component, which includes the new transformer in the Northeast Substation and all the infrastructure associated with that. This is, as Rahad and Bob Rugdi put together the memo, this is really the first of several projects over the next two years for rehabbing and completely replacing Paramount. So, we are recommending approval of 17-123 for $385,000 with Power Systems Engineering. You'll recall, well, again, I, we used, we used another name, even dropped on my head, a firm out of St. Louis for the 138 project. We had quite a few problems with them. And we tried a couple of other smaller engineering firms on some projects. One did Jerry Park Substation, they did a fairly decent job, but then they also had some issues on some other projects. Power Systems Engineering recently did for us the Colonial Village project, as well as the Fabian Transmission Project, and both of those projects went really well. So, that's why we're recommending to go with Power Systems Engineering. We had, we had really good experience with them, and so we're confident in their ability to, to do this work, so.
Any comments or questions?
Are we on item five?
We're on item five.
You jumped the phone, sorry.
Sorry.
On item five, I assume that we're looking into the future and doing this too, because we do have a lot of industrial area out there that can yet be developed. So is a part of this kind of planning for the future as well, or is that something that?
So, looking in very narrow scope, this is replacement of a substation. In the memo, they talk about a circuit improvement. That circuit improvement will provide more redundancy and more capacity up there. That kind of will address your question. That's the future as part of these chain of projects which we'll be doing over the next couple of years.
Okay.
Scott? Did you have something? Anybody else? Anyone care to make a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Salvati, second by Uwe. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? I just have it.
Consent?
Consent.
Okay. All right, let's jump back to item number four then, Alderman O'Brien, which is 17-111-R.
Back in 2013, we hired a company to kind of survey all our overhead lines, our overhead poles. They did so, and we've been addressing that since. And we're gonna go into the Highland overhead electric improvements in 2018 to replace some of that aging infrastructure, basically. I guess in 2016, we did the Colonial Road and Colonial Village in 2017. So it's basically just a maintenance issue for our overhead infrastructure. Does that sum it up, Gary?
Yeah. It's basically the, almost exactly the same scope that we're just completing now in Colonial Village. So, replacement of poles, replacement of the overhead wires, infrastructure, to do with it in Highland.
Any comments or questions? Dave?
Gary, does, as you mentioned in your memo here, and you just mentioned you've been doing it in different sections of town, and I know you tested all the wood poles throughout the entire city. Does this look like it's gonna be an ongoing, every-year thing that has to be done to try to?
These are large projects that we know of. The Osmos pole study still, we still have, I'd probably say hundreds of poles that are part of the Osmo study that still need to get replaced. We chose these projects first because these are like whole collections, entire neighborhoods of, of infrastructure that reaches, reach the end of their, end of their life. The other poles that we have, after we get through these big projects, are onesie-twosies. They're throughout the system. And we've addressed some, many of them already, but we still have many of them to go. Hopefully that answers your question.
Yeah. There, one more question. There was some discussion a few years back about the condition of these concrete poles on Wilson Street.
Yes.
Is there, you got a date in mind of when we think we're gonna have to do something with those?
We actually included some funds in the 2018 budget proposal that City Council will consider. You're in the business, Mike, you're in the business. There's really no long-term solution that's gonna permanently cure those poles. They're gonna continue to deteriorate at this point. The water is infiltrating those poles, causing the rebar to rust, the rebar rusts, it expands to ten times its normal size, causes the concrete to spall, concrete spalls, introduces more water into the poles. The cycle is just gonna get worse and worse as, as time goes on. 2018, we're hoping to put a Band-Aid on them, hopefully to seal, not, I mean, you really don't want to seal, because once you get the moisture in, if you seal it, there's a sort, when moisture gets in and it's sealed, then you, then you really have a problem. You've gotta let the poles breathe. But we can cover up those spalled areas and those exposed areas of rebar to try and slow it down. The solution is that those poles are, are on the downslope of their, of their life.
So in 2018, there's gonna be some?
Yeah, I think we have $20,000 or $30,000 in there, just for repair work, for those poles.
So, I just want to say that, you know, our electric utility, it's, it's ours, and we pride ourselves on the service that we provide and the redundant system that we have. And this is just maintaining that to, to keep at least the, the quality to a high standard. So, anyone else? Anyone care to make a motion?
So moved. Second.
Moved by Uwe, second by McFadden. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
It was my, this second was my.
Was it?
The second was me.
Oh, I'm sorry. Second was Meitzler.
Conscientating me again.
Consent?
Conscientualism.
Sorry about that.
All right, we're gonna move on then to item number six, which is the approval and the consideration of deposition, disposition of certain city-owned properties. Alderman Atak?
Yes, so staff has presented us with a memo making some recommendations to do on, for some of the properties that is, are city-owned, including the Tomlee Building, the North Water Street across from, over here, across from the Historical Society, and, I'm sorry, 2150 West Main Street. And they're recommending that we hire a broker, two different brokers actually, one that specializes more in residential, one that specializes for the property on Water Street, and one that specializes more in development for the Tomlee Building. And they're also suggesting that, they're gonna change the RFP for the Tomlee Building, say that the plan could include demolition of the building. So, and they're also suggesting that we talk about the situation with the food pantry, which is a city-owned property, and considering perhaps helping them move to the vacant land that we own west of town on Main Street. Would you like to add anything, Chris?
No, I think that clears it up. We were given some assignments, one was to look at the RFP, and so we changed that. As you indicated, we essentially deleted the condition that we won't consider any proposal that involves demolishing and removing the Tomlee Building. So that would be taken out on the RFP. But we, before we actually send the RFP out, as you said, there was some discussion as we talked about the RFP, well, what about selling the land with the use of a broker? And so, we've developed some strategies on that as well. And what we did was speak to some, I spoke to two national, actually, their regional office brokers, as to their interest in representing it, any of the properties, the commercial properties, the Tomlee Building, and the 2150, which is the vacant parcel west of Aldi the city owns. And the sense was that both properties would be better, the city would be better served if we had someone local, independent probably, and that knew the market, especially with the Tomlee Building, and that it's a small building, you'd probably likely, the market will be somebody that knows Batavia, knows Batavia's building stock, knows the rental rates, and, and also the larger pieces as well, that would be most likely better served. We'd get on the attention, the radar screen of a smaller broker, but more commercial-oriented, and also one that knew development and entitlement process, because that is not an existing building, it's a vacant land. So, as you said, we, as we talked about, the 2150 Main Street, the west, westernmost property, there was discussion, there's been repeated discussion from time to time at staff meetings about the Interfaith Food Pantry, and they're needing to perhaps relocate and, and needing more room and expansion. And so, some of the conversation was, you know, maybe this is a possible site for them. And so I said, well, look, if that's the consideration, then before we retain a broker to represent it, we need to call the question with the council, is this something you're interested in? And if it's not, then we'll also include that in, in our, essentially requests for proposals to brokers, asking them to, to submit a proposal as to what you want to do representing our properties, to include, give us a price estimate, give us a strategy on how you're gonna market it, you know, tell us how long you'd like exclusive representation, what your commission would be for closing. Those type of questions you ask as you solicit brokers, we thought we'd hold back on that if, in fact, we're gonna have the 2150 property included in the, you know, the brokerage on the commercial piece. Finally, as you said, the Water Street property is very clear that that is a residential land use issue, and, you know, those are kind of two birds of different feather, if you will, so we would want to get our own residential broker, knowing the market, to represent that vacant property, and leave the commercial pieces, Tomlee and 2150 West Main, to the brokerage firm that more has, more experienced with commercial property. So, we're asking that question, first of all, tonight, are you interested in considering, discussing with the Interfaith Food Pantry, the possibility of their acquiring that land from the city, with ultimately the, the plan to relocate their, construct a facility on that site? If that's out of the question, then we can move ahead with our original plan, which was to retain a commercial broker for that, that piece.
Any comments, Dave?
I'd like to, I see the mayor's raising his hand, or I was gonna say, I'd like to put the mayor on the spot here, not only because of his experience in the real estate business, but also as our mayor, and tell us what he thinks we ought to do here.
Well, I mean, I think the Food Pantry has, we're very stellar, very proud to be of record of service to the town. I mean, I think they, excuse me. The Food Pantry has done, I think, a remarkable job in putting Batavia first and the residents in this town first, and they've really done some wondrous things. And so, I certainly would think it would not be out of order if we considered donating that property to the Food Pantry. The only issues I would raise with that is, is that that subdivision is part of a tangly Burke strat in early development, and there are some pretty tight covenants on that subdivision, including review of any new building that's being built there has to meet certain standards. And anticipation of myself maybe making this suggestion to you tonight, I was just out there this afternoon, and I've been in there twice, when, when it was sunny and when it's dark. And all the other buildings in that property are made out of masonry, basically, except for, the Golden Corral has a little something other than masonry on, on parts of it, but most everything else is brick and mortar. I think you would probably find, or if we gave it to them, they would find that they would probably have to meet some standard of construction in that manner, and that they couldn't just go out there and build a pole building, because, you know, there's just been some major reinvestment in that area by the gentleman who took over the former Aldi store. He's done a beautiful job, and he's done a lot of screening, and then there's a, a parking lot that's kind of in front of our piece that Aldi used to share with Golden Corral, and that's still in rough shape. So there's some things that need to be done, because I believe there is a homeowner's monthly assessment fee that's put to play there that you have to use to maintain things and replace pavement and the streetlights and whatever have you. So it would not be an inexpensive move for them to take it over, but certainly, I think, a donation of the land by the city would be in order. Laura and I talked about this earlier in this afternoon, and if there was enough room, you know, we're always looking for some months of the year for some storage area for toys that get donated for the toy drive. And so, you know, maybe we could work out something, or we could put some toys in part of it or something. But I, I don't mean to speak for the Food Pantry, because they are here and can certainly speak for themselves, but I would certainly be pleased to put the idea before the council that we donate the land to them, if in fact that's where they want to go, knowing full well that there's, it's not gonna be just an immediate slam dunk that you can go out there and put a pole building or something up there. There's gonna have to be some, some, probably some concrete in it and some architecture put into the place, because they just won't, I don't think you'll get approval, because everybody else has met the standard. Interestingly, within the last six weeks, I've had the Mobile Gas Station in, talking about, they're thinking about doing something out there. I don't think they're planning to get any smaller, as far as the building space go. I think they're looking to do something a little bit larger. And they haven't made any final decisions yet, but they're kind of in, in play out there too. And of course, across the street, on the other side of Rando at Main, you know, we've, in the Mooseheart Annexation Agreement, we've annexed and zoned that corner for, it's about 40 acres for business development there. I don't know if we know what that business will be, but that is. So, I mean, there will be a lot of, you know, activity out there, and be high visibility, and certainly a place that, you know, Batavia could pound its chest over, that we're here doing this good work on behalf of some of our less fortunate residents.
Any thought on the other properties?
The other?
The Tomlee Building and the North Water Street, and how we should handle that?
Well, I probably have had six or seven people in here over the years with the Tomlee Building, telling me that this potentially is the, the most dynamite site in Batavia for a restaurant. Specifically, if you go down and put it on the riverfrontage down there, and if you look at the old configurations that were there when it was a third rail station, there was a covered depot in there, and people have shown me that picture and said, you know, if you put this building back and made a restaurant out of it, and use the existing building as the kitchen, you could really have a dynamite situation going here to kind of feed on the existing tenacity of the downtown Batavia Business District. So, I, I guess I would hesitant be to see us tear that down, but, you know, if something came up, but just for somebody to tear it down to do something else, it wouldn't surprise me that somebody comes in here and says, well, I'm gonna tear it down and put some kind of rental housing or condos or something in there too. That certainly would be an opportunity. If you look at the spots along the Fox River, you know, the views there, you got the bridge, but you've also go, looking south there, that's a pretty good view of the river, and you constantly can view the changing levels of the water, and who's crossing the bridge, and whatever have you. So I, it would be a very marketable property if you had some living units, so maybe a combination of a restaurant and living units, I don't know. But the bigger issue too may be there, how much parking is available, because there's this kind of weird configuration of parking lot back there, and we own part of it, and I guess the Marconi family who owns the bank building owns part of it, and I'm not sure who else may have a handle in it. And it really is in need of being resurfaced. There's a lot, several bad potholes in there, and, you know, there's a couple dumpsters sitting in the middle of it. It certainly could be jazzied up a lot better than it is right now. So that would be the, what's the third one you mentioned?
The North Water Street, but more, more particularly, I mean, I don't think that probably anybody here, we had this discussion at the last committee meeting, that we should maybe look into getting rid of some of these properties. But more so, the process here in going out for an RFP and/or working with a local Realtor versus a big-name Realtor, do you have any thought process?
I'm not, I'm not gonna get into the real estate business, thank you very much.
Okay.
Well, the one thing, you know, the one observation I would make is, you, you know, the piece out there behind the old, I'll call it the old Aldi, which I talked about giving to the Food Pantry, we've had that on the market, there's a big sign out there, and, you know, we haven't really had, meant much tire kicking on it, as far as I know. So that one. The one that I've, I've raised interest in is, is that our electric utility owns the old sock farm out there on West Main Street, directly across the street from the Grace McLean School and Tanglewood subdivision. And I know that was originally bought because we thought we were gonna have to put an electrical substation there, and maybe there is still some utility need there, but I talked to the former owner today about that, and he's of the opinion, he thinks there's 10 acres there. And some of which is probably the northern piece of it could be in some flood pine. But you could probably, I would think that would be a very marketable piece if we don't need that. I don't know what we would need 10 acres for a utility facilities for, but, I mean, I think that we would get some angst from the Tanglewood subdivision if we went too wild and willy with things there, without some significant screening or whatever put around it, because some of those homes, Alborowski maybe, or Happner Way, back up, look right at that particular piece of property. So, you could see where Alderman McFadden's, and your phone would be ringing, I think, about what's gonna happen there.
Well, I was gonna ask if we wanted to consider that piece of property too. I know at one time, yeah, it was gonna be for an electric substation, and then there was some, when that didn't have to happen. We talked about keeping it for a possibility of another salt storage shed out there, or some other utility purposes, and I just don't know if we still think, if Public Works, if staff has still got that same opinion, or?
The Water Utility purchased that about eight years ago, for the reason of potentially a future water treatment plant or supplemental treatment plant to what we already have. Both of the mainline water mains run right, right in front of that property, so it's, it's a parcel that the Water Department has kept and probably would desire to continue keeping into the future, because our water treatment plant, as you know, is not all of our property out there. When you, when you drive out there, it's not, we don't own all that property, that that looks like it's all wide open and vacant. It is wide open and vacant, but it's not ours. So, we're kinda landlocked out at our current treatment plant site, and would very potentially need further treatment at some point in the future, and that's why we've kept that Main Street site.
So, Water bought that from Electric?
Yeah, about eight years ago.
Okay. I guess I kinda remember it after you mentioned it.
It was right when I first started here. I think Water paid 350, 300,000 for it.
And those would be, that would be money that would go back into the enterprise funds for the utilities. That's not general fund money that bought those.
Exactly, yeah. Yeah, Water paid the Electric Utilities, I think it was 300,000 back then.
Oh, any other comments? Dan?
I was mentioning to a few people before we got started, I just recently joined Food Pantry out in Elmhurst, was pleasantly surprised to hear of the volunteerism that was happening out there and the thinking outside the box that, that organization was doing. They built a building, almost a million dollars, on land that was donated to them. Essentially, they're paying a dollar for 100 years to be on that land. So for us to build a building out near the Aldi, it's, that's gonna be a million dollars at the very least, if we were to build it large enough to combine everything. You could put a closed closet in there, you could put storage space for the toys, you could have a very nice food pantry out there. If we were to donate that land, is it possible that the city could consider giving a, not like a forgivable loan, but like a, a donation of some kind to get them started while they were building their own capital campaign? Organizations like this have very large networks and could ultimately pay us back if we, as a group, acknowledge that this is, this is a community value. I know Batavia has raised a million dollars before, I mean, there's a Riverwalk out there, so it's not that we can't do this.
Yeah, I guess my response to that would be, you know, whatever we can do. I am worried, as I've told you several times recently, about the status of municipal finance in Illinois, and I don't know if I think this is the moment when I need to be throwing a lot of money out there that we may need other places. I mean, I'm not sure where we're going with this revenue. There's, I was on a call today, and legislature's down there apparently about to enact this property tax freeze, which, you know, we got one of the lowest ones around, so we'll probably be the, not hurt much. We certainly can't raise the taxes much, or appear, maybe on pensions if we had to, but, so anything we've got now, we gotta make sure we got the revenue to pay for it. And that being the case, I don't know if I think we got a lot of extra revenue that we can just kind of spin around. But certainly if we do this, I would think between the churches and everybody else, we can certainly find, kick the tire in the community and find out if there's other benefactors that would like to join in on our generosity here and support.
All I'm getting at is that we could be really creative with the financing. If we could give them a bridge of some kind, if they had a very serious capital campaign and knew that they could pass back. I'm saying Batavia's done it before, I think that we could do it again. I don't think this would be long-term debt for us, I think it's something that could be paid off in three to five years.
Let's see, there are quite a few people here from the Food Pantry, if you want to see if they?
All right, yeah, is there anyone from the Food Pantry that would like to speak?
Sure.
Give us your name and address for the record.
My name is Betsy Zinzer, and I am the Director of the Food Pantry and Closed Closet. And I'd like to step back for a couple minutes and go back to the beginning of this conversation that the Food Pantry has been having with city staff, maybe for a couple of months now, as we have approached them and they have approached us, and we're trying to figure out a problem that we have. For about 20 years, I think, the Food Pantry and Closed Closet have operated out of this building at 100 Flynn Street, and we've also been utilizing the storage at the Old Baptist Church. And combined, that arrangement has been absolutely perfect, and we are so grateful and very thankful for everything that it has offered us. For the past 24 months, that arrangement has changed a lot. The Old Baptist Church was torn down, and when that happened, we lost our storage there. There was quite a bit of storage we had. We had one room for winter clothes, we had one room for summer clothes, we had one room for the Food Pantry, and one room for seasonal items. And Pure I allowed us to move our stuff into their basement. It's a much smaller facility, but we're very happy to have it. But we're also there at their will, if they were to sell their building or do something else, we'd have to find a new home. In addition to that change, the water treatment plant expanded, as you know, and we lost this area outside our building, which we used in our operations. We used it to process our food drive donations, we used it to host job fairs, we used it to do flu shots and health screenings, we used it for our holiday turkey drive distribution, and we are either trying to adapt to those, the absence of that, or just not do those things. So this year, we did not have any job fairs, we did not have any flu shots. And then, as you know, I think it was a couple weeks ago, you all voted about parking, and you so kindly voted to keep the parking along Flynn Street, so I think that the amount- Flynn Street. So I think that the amount of parking that would be city along that street would be about 18, 19 parking spaces. I don't remember exactly. But when we operate on a normal day, we have between 40 or 50 parking spaces that we fill. And we park in BEI parking. And that works because the space there, they park in front of that limestone building is currently used by the city. It's sort of warehouse space. But if BEI were to get a tenant that needed that parking, we would not have it. So we would either have to use parking down along Shumway in that lot that's about two blocks away along the river, or we'd have to go up to the Walgreens parking lot. I'm not quite sure how we would get everybody in. So those are three challenges that the Food Pantry is facing now as we're looking forward. What, what are we going to do in the long term? So simultaneously, the bike path happened. And we had meetings about where is the bike path going to go? And in those meetings, a couple city employees said, would you consider moving? And we said, sure, we'd consider moving. We love where we are. Downtown is a better location than anywhere else. But we understand that we, it might not always work where we are. So we're looking for a way to serve the community in the same way we have been serving it for many years, to try to maintain that. So money, I guess that's sort of what you all are trying to figure out. How, and we're trying to figure out how would we pay for this, right? We can't afford a million dollar building. We can do a capital campaign. Capital campaigns for food pantries and probably most not-for-profits run in a November, December, early January timeframe. Almost all money is raised during that period of time. So what we're really looking at, if we were going to do a capital campaign, is 12 months from now to kick in. A million dollars sounds like an incredible amount of money. Our operating each month, I mean, each year is maybe $180,000. So that's not the level of money we typically raise. So that would be a, we would need your support as we have had your support. And you provide the building to us, you provide electric to us. The gas, I believe, is provided for by Nycor. We do not pay those things. And we depend on that to be able to make our monthly budget work. So as you're discussing this and you're thinking about how we might move forward, we want to serve. And we will, are willing to serve in a capacity, whether it is downtown Batavia or whether it's west of Randall. We are willing to do a fundraising campaign to raise as much money as we can. But I, when you threw it a million dollars, I, I just can't imagine that happening on our end. So I don't know if there's any questions that you might have for the Food Pantry folks?
If I could just hop in. You also, you want to talk about, because you guys had requested, at least had, had staff look at possibly expanding your current site.
Oh, right. So we thought, okay, what if we expand our existing site? And we met with Scott. And Scott said, well, if you add a square foot, you're going to have to put in a sprinkler system. And that's going to be cost like 70,000 or 80,000 or something. And we need a new roof because the roof is leaking. And we are at the outer edge of everything. And we would have to get all these zoning code changes to expand even an inch. I think that we would be outside of all, it just was, did not look possible for us to expand where we are. So that, we started there. That was our initial plan. Okay, let's put an ADA compliant bathroom and do the things that would be appropriate for a Food Pantry. And that just really wasn't possible after we had met with Scott.
Betsy, how many square feet do you have there now?
Oh, that's a good question. I think if you combine the existing storage and our building now, it's about 3,500 square feet.
And obviously, you'd probably, you wouldn't want to go larger. So you could house the toy drive and
Right, right.
Everything else. You got, need storage. I mean, what you've got right now is about 3,500 square feet.
Right, exactly.
I think a million dollars would be on the low side.
I'm Marty.
Yeah, I just have a question of, we know that the, the laws surrounding selling property up to, you know, we have to accept 80% of the value. What are the laws regarding how we donate so that another, another very reputable organization goes, well, where's our donation for land? So that we open, make sure that it's a, a fair process for all worthwhile charities that would just say, it's a noble cause, we support it. But what about another group that may want to do something with it too? How do you, since we know on sales, it's, it's very tightly regulated, how does it go for donations? What's the process for that?
Is that a question for me?
If you know.
I, I don't know. I would really need to look into that.
That's probably from Kevin to
Exactly.
Just so that we wouldn't have another organization that's very worthwhile, Suicide Prevention Services come in and just go, we could do something with that property too. Don't know.
It would seem that maybe the arrangement that Alderman Chans had mentioned, that even if the city kept ownership, but then leased the property to Food Pantry for a dollar for the next 100 years, we keep ownership, we're not donating anything.
And that was one thing that I was kind of wondering, because then that's no different than the, kind of the situation that we already have. But if we were wanting to use it as a donation instead, so that if, if it got deeded into their names and they obtained conventional financing on the property as a means of, means of financing the project, they could possibly do that. But that would need to make sure that it was still within the realms of can we do that?
Right.
Marty, I think you bring up a good point though, is when you mentioned suicide prevention, because let's maybe think bigger picture. It is a fairly large lot. I'm not sure how many square feet a building it would support. But maybe that's where you ought to start, is look at what it would support. And then maybe it couldn't, you could join forces out there with other agencies that maybe have got other ways and means of fundraising and capital and such. And I'm just trying to think outside the box here of how we can make this work.
I think it's a wonderful idea.
That was exactly where I was kind of thinking, that if we had maybe three or four organizations, if it fit, then who's to say you don't have a nice little area over there for, for others that, you know, maybe they can't do it on their own. But if they partner with somebody else and if it's given to them on the land, I don't know. But it's the kind of being creative on it. But I know we're tied on conventional selling of the property. So I would just want to make sure we're doing everything right all around.
You know, one thing, I'd like to interject here is, is I believe we were given that piece of property that we're talking about. It's kind of like the gas station site out at, at Wilson.
I understand that property, we're given to the city.
Right. We were, we've been given to one, we turned around and
We've also got the tension area behind it.
And sold for 671,000 out there on Kirk Road. And this one, you know, I'm proposing that we do something to try to service the community. I, you know, leasing it, renting it, whatever. But I, I think that, I don't want anybody to think, oh, the city paid a bunch of money for this property and now they're giving it away. We didn't pay anything for the property.
Yeah, it occurred to me when Alderman Brown asked, you know, what can be built on there. Obviously, there, you've got 1.4 acres. That's a pretty good sized piece of property over 60,000 square feet. If you go two stories, for instance, you know, you'd have to add some ADA accessibility, which drives up costs. But then you reduce the footprint and allows for more parking. And maybe the thought is, the city retain it, the city arrange some way that they would also own the structure on the building and we simply lease it. And it's a community center that we just happen to temporarily use, are these multiple, hopefully multiple type of not-for-profit uses, all co-located. Maybe they can, economies of scale associated with transportation costs and parking. And so that's, that's an interesting idea to explore. I'm glad it's been discussed because it does give me real pause not to push the idea of getting out there and put it on the commercial market. We've got other land to, to sell and develop besides that.
Which is obviously what you're up here looking for tonight, some direction on what we should be doing, not how we're going to
Right. No, that's too far down the spig. But my thought is, if I can get some direction, let's hold off on the 2150. I'll go ahead and find a broker for the Water Street as well as a Tomley Building. I'll also develop that RFP. But I think we'll use that RFP for the Tomley Building in conjunction with discussing with the broker, what, what kind of proposals we want to see. And then let the market kind of, you know, work its way into free enterprise.
Alan?
As I sit here and listen to this, I think I heard, I think it was, you know, somebody else bring up the fact that we're parking next door to the Food Pantry in front of a BEI building that the city is temporarily using. And I hear the words BEI and I hear the city-owned property that we have out on Main Street. BEI is a property manager. They have a lot of land. They've done a lot of things with it. They've sold it, traded by, whatever. What would preclude us from taking the land that we have out there, trading it with BEI for the property that we're actually using today across the street from the current Food Pantry, retaining the Food Pantry, put a roof on that, use it for storage, move the Food Pantry into the BEI building that's there, figure out what square footage we could get from them in the trade for the property that we have out on Main Street and let them deal with developing it and getting rid of it as a property land manager. I mean, I'm just thinking out of the box.
That's interesting thought. I don't know the values or
It would keep the Food Pantry downtown. It would keep all the local accessibility, I think, issues that we have right now. You'd have the parking still in front of it. You'd have it in an area where it's become familiar to the people that use it.
Yeah, it would probably speak to Alderman Callahan's consideration about how do we make it a level playing field? What you do is you do a proposal to exchange land and that the land that you desire in the exchange be a swap associated with a property and give it kind of a geographical location. So very few people really would be able to have an eligible property to swap. You, I, I think that would make it legal at any rate, without having to worry about a whole slew of different property owners having different types of proposals.
And I just, you know, thinking out of the side of the box, that to me reuses the property that's already there and then gives the viability for property in the commercial area to generate some kind of sales tax at some point, if it gets developed into something that can generate sales tax.
So Chris?
There probably have to be some boot between the, if the values are different, there's a boot, you have to make it
Right. We could, you know, we have enough property, they have enough property, we can figure something out if they would be willing to even discuss that. You know, I think that to me, I would feel a lot better about doing that than starting from zero, ground zero on a blank slate and getting us into something that, you know, I'm not afraid of the million dollar number. But if we can't do that and we get halfway into it, then what do we do?
Well, it could also put some retail on Randall Road.
Right. That's my other thought.
Would otherwise be eliminating the Food Pantry going out there.
And if we retain ownership, no tax money off of it.
So I think it's a great, great ideas and things to, everybody to kick around. But in the meantime, Chris, that direction.
Right. And I think he's got the direction.
You do have the direction you want to hire a broker, you guys?
For, for the Tomley Building and, and one for the North Water Street. I think the other question is still up for further discussion.
Can, can I ask a question?
No.
Certainly.
Chris, did you say that we're going to not tear down, we're going to give direction not to tear down Tomley Building? That's
I thought the consensus the other night was, when I originally drafted the RFP, there was a condition that we would exclude any proposals that specifically involve the demolition and remove the building. And the consensus, I, I thought was, why tie our hands to, to that requirement? Why not open it up without that and see what comes forward? Because someone might be very creative in the redevelopment and, and, you know, adding value to the property while still being sensitive to the historic district. So I would exclude that as a condition in the sale.
Right. I mean, that was my fear.
I think that was your original
We were just kind of limiting our exposure there. And, and, you know, I'm not advocating to tear it down. But if a project comes along that, that is quite interesting and, and we've tore other buildings down in the city. Not that I'm proud of that or any, anything like that. But if it's going to make us, help us move forward as a city, I think it's something, as, as it is now as an incubator, it's nice. It's a feel-good, but it's not moving us forward, you know? And so, so I'm not opposed to tearing it down if that was the last alternative, I guess, is what I'm saying.
Any other thoughts?
Got what you need?
Thank you.
Thank you. Next item is item seven, which is the discussion of the Food Pantry and the Toy Drive. Kind of skipping around here tonight a little bit. Okay, anything else to discuss on that tonight? Anybody have anything? Okay. Item eight, discussion on a solid waste contract. Alderman Wolf? I didn't have a memo for that. So we'll let Gary take it then.
I remember the original year, the mayor may know, when we had a solid waste contract back in 2004, 2005. What I do know is that contract ended in '08, because that was the year I started here. And '08 was the throes of the Great Recession. And that contract, when they, when they would expire, they actually offered us very favorable fuel surcharges. I don't know if you remember back then, everyone was talking about fuel surcharge. So we ended up staying with that same contractor for four more years. Come 20, late part of 2011, early part of 2012, we met with Geneva and St. Charles to talk about going out for a joint bid for solid waste. St. Charles had a very aggressive contract at that time. Theirs was up, but they had a good clause to extend. So they chose to just extend their contract. And Geneva and, and ourselves, we joined together to form a common contract document. So the contract document was identical for both communities. We worked together to coordinate pickup days. And if you recall, we had to change our pickup day with, with this, with this contract. But we bid it out as two separate contracts. Legally, it's two separate contracts. But the contractors were essentially bidding on a larger project because they were bidding on both at the same time. So obviously, Advanced Disposal won that bid back in 2012. And now their contract is up next year. So I think Laura mentioned last night that we had met last week with representatives from this time Geneva and St. Charles. St. Charles has actually now got themselves in the same cycle as us. And so they're going to be going out this time as well, or interested this time in, in, in looking at solid waste. So jumping back a couple of months, I believe Laura and, and who else it was that met with Advanced Disposal folks, they came in to talk with you. Advanced Disposal folks have also talked with the managers in Geneva and St. Charles. They've talked with the staffs. They met with Scott Hens and myself three or four weeks ago now. Advanced Disposal would prefer if we didn't go out to bid and if we were able to just renegotiate with them. We talked internally amongst the staff last week. St. Charles and Geneva both feel that that might be a possibility in their communities. And we're a little hesitant about it. And that's why we're coming here to see if you guys, if that's a non-starter. Some more background. I think it's Alburn, and anyway, Alburn Sure Grow, somewhere out west there now has, and again, it may not even be applicable to us, but they have a hauler that's coming in from Rockford to service those areas. Again, they're that much farther west than us, so it may make more sense. That contractor has given them a, a, a rate that is just amazing. So Groot actually has Oswego, which is where I live. We pay a lot less than what we're paying here. So I guess Scott Hens and myself, we're a little hesitant to not go out to bid because of the fact that there are some really generous contracts out there now. But on the same hand, you know, staying with Advance and telling Advance, you know, yeah, we'll sit at the table with you. And, and you know, if you want to keep our business, you're going to have to come up with a really aggressive proposal. There's some leverage to that too, because Advance already has all their infrastructure in place here to serve us. And it's their interest to, to continue to serve us as well as St. Charles. So we're open to that idea of sitting with them and talking with them. But we didn't even want to approach that or even didn't want to consider that without coming to you first. Because if that's, again, a non-starter, you guys just saying that we have to go out for bid, certainly understandable. And that's the direction we'll head. So I guess that was the, the idea tonight was, we want to at least have discussions with, with Advance about not going out for bid and negotiating directly with them for the next contract. Or should we just begin the process of preparing bid documents?
Can, why can't they just bid like everyone else?
They can and probably will.
Okay.
Jeff?
You know, obviously, this is on the street and there's a lot of people know what's going on in the waste disposal business. Laura and I have been invited to have a meeting on Laura and I have been invited to have a meeting on Thursday afternoon it is with one of the competitors. They'd like to come in and probably should have Gary come down, but I mean, there's people on the doorstep, literally, here wanting to talk about this contract. So, I think we're in a pretty good position to leverage some good bids for this community here. So, when I got them coming on Thursday to want to talk to us, we, I think we should at least listen to what everybody's saying.
I think there's other opportunities here, too. Gary, you know a whole lot more about this than I do, but, and what exactly Batavia gets as compared to what other municipalities get other than pricing. You know, I know Advance picks up all of our public waste.
Our transfer agreement.
Yeah, I mean, do, do we get, when we have festivals, do they pick that up free of charge? I think some municipalities have got what they call community dumpsters that are paid for by the municipality, but then maintained and cleaned up and everything by the disposal companies and then the public, or the, the public prop, not public, the private properties that use it. In other words, like in Naperville where they've got all the restaurants, they used to have dumpsters everywhere. Now, they've got a community dumpster. Each restaurant owner, each building owner has a swipe card. They take their garbage out, they use their swipe card, they get charged for the garbage every time their swipe card goes in. But the disposal company was a partner in putting that together. So, I mean, I think there's a lot of opportunities here besides pricing on what we can negotiate with them to help the city.
Yeah, they would like, I mean, one example of that, Alderman, is they would like us to go to an all card program, which we've always been hesitant to do because we have a number of people in town who don't even fill up, don't, don't use one sticker a week. I mean, they use maybe less than one sticker a week. We have the half-bag program. So, there, those are things that you could sit at the table with, or we'll sit with bid documents and try and work through those options, and that's a separate discussion for a separate night. It's those exact things, downtown dumpsters, customize the program to fit the most people in town, things like our hall, our transfer station. There is a benefit, we added Geneva to our transfer station. They didn't previously, their waste didn't go through our transfer station. So, we get an economic benefit by having done the joint bid and now having their waste to go through our transfer station. So, there's positives and negatives to both sides of it.
Speaking of the transfer station, are we at a limit out there, or can they still bring in more than they're bringing every day?
Honestly, I don't know, but I can't find out.
I know we can find out because they pay a tipping fee.
Yeah. I just don't know the answer off my head, off top.
We increased the amount that they could push through there.
What's that?
We increased the amount that they could push through there.
Right, and I just don't know if they're hitting that.
Up to the top of it yet.
That cap, or if they're, maybe that could be, like you say, you know, if they're not at their cap and we could say that you must use our, the waste transfer station located in our town.
Right.
You know, I don't know how you, how you do that. I'm just, again, like the last subject, thinking outside the box.
Creative tonight.
Outside the can.
And I think not too long ago, the mayor talked about when we negotiate the next garbage contract, maybe talking about getting the leaf pickup, the bag pickup changed so it's not just December, as was talked about last night.
Right.
Leaves aren't falling this year and the snow's supposed to start coming this weekend. So, you know, maybe it needs to be changed so that it's November and December that they pick up the bags.
Those are all options, those are exactly the types of options we can work and talk with you about. Those are things that we can, I mean, as far as we're concerned, again, Geneva and St. Charles being the same, if we decide to sit down with Advance, we're sitting down with Advance in our mind with a clean slate. This isn't just take the existing contract and give us a few more years and we're gonna follow all these same terms and conditions because we may want to change things like that.
And you don't necessarily have that opportunity when you go out for bid.
Well, we do, though. No, we actually have that opportunity when we go out for bid because when we go out for bid, we would create a whole bid document that would be.
Right, but you can't negotiate something more after you've gone out to bid.
No, yes, you're right. Once you've gone out to bid and you have those things, that is what you have. You can't, you can't change it at that point. We had some alternates last time. In fact, one of the alternates was to change our collection day to better mesh with Geneva. We ended up choosing that alternate for less cost.
Is there anything wrong with sitting down with Advance first to see if you think you can come up with a favorable agreement before you come back to us and say you'd like to go out for bid? I don't know.
Yeah, we do both.
Yeah, we can do both, but we didn't want to even go down that road until we knew what your guys' direction.
I think it'll be interesting Thursday to hear what somebody from the outside says after they've seen what the public documents are that we've already approved on these contracts. To me, that's one of, that's one of the things they're gonna come in to talk to you guys about. They're gonna come in and say, well, we can do it for X dollars less and we can do the same service, this is what we do. I'm sure that that's their sales pitch. And then that's something that you can sit down at the table with Advance with.
You know, the fact they don't want to negotiate it, they, or they'd rather just negotiate it rather than bid it.
Right.
Says they know it. That there's, there's some play in the market and they want to.
When do you need an answer, Gary?
Well, we're here because we did not want to sit down with Advance, begin negotiating for something that wasn't the bidding process without council's direction. I mean, our standard direction is we go out for bid. And if, and we are fully comfortable with sitting down with Advance if council is okay with that approach.
But, but can you wait a week to get that direction from us?
Oh, yeah.
Let us think about it and talk about it a little bit.
Do we have to lodge a protest?
Too soon.
Too soon.
The ten of us have to agree.
Okay, so why don't we put this on the agenda for next Tuesday?
Sure. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. All right, item nine, project status.
Yeah, this is always hard when it's the day after I've given the status of all of the projects the night before. But because we covered so much territory yesterday, maybe it bears mentioning some of the community and economic development projects that I mentioned last night and some of the public works projects in case you guys had any questions about those. Community and economic development, we talked about the fact that there are several properties that we are planning to annex on Whipple. So, there's, our scheduling, the community development department is scheduling public hearings for the December Plan Commission meetings for those properties. And also Park District Lot on South River Street and a couple of city-owned open space and detention parcels as well. That's part of the project that Scott Buning has of, he likes to call it kind of closing those donut holes that exist in, within our city map. Also, this week, we met with the developer of Catherine's Cove, that's off of First Street, to discuss the engineering feedback and to review other comments that were made with them. Also, we received an initial land use review application for the Villas of White Oaks Development, which would be off of South Radent Road, and this will probably come to be before the committee of the whole in December. The hotel feasibility study in response to a request for proposals, we've received six proposals from professional consulting firms, and so staff is gonna be reviewing those proposals, and we plan to make a selection by this Friday at the, at the latest. Let's see, looking at the public works projects, of course, we talked about the Tonka filter last night that you don't know until you open up that filter to know what kind of condition it is, but we were happy to see that the structural integrity of what is inside there was better than expected. And then also, we are continuing to work on the proposed draft of an updated pole attachment agreement with Comcast. We have a franchise agreement, but we do not have a pole attachment agreement, and one of the things we're trying to do is keep an even playing field with all of the different communications companies that come in and want to attach their apparatus to our electric poles, that we're maintaining the same standards with regard to each one of those companies, whether it be the notice that they have to provide us for what they're going to be attaching and, and get the appropriate permits to the amounts of time that we give them. For instance, if some of their equipment becomes obsolete and unused, that there's a certain period of time within which they need to remove that equipment because all of it has to do with the load that is borne by all of our electric poles throughout the city. And our number one concern, and Mike, you pointed it out before, that this is our electric utility, and we want to make sure that we maintain the integrity of our electric utility. And so, while we like to accommodate the use of the poles for the communications companies, our primary goal is to maintain the integrity of the electric service that we're able to provide to our customers. And that's all that I have unless there are specific projects that you wanted to ask me about. I'm sorry, I remembered one more thing. At yesterday's meeting, we were talking about the date for the public hearing on the budget, and you noticed that Peggy had, had come up to correct the information that I was given. Well, a little more research was done on that today. It actually is just a one-week notice provision, so the date for the public hearing for our budget is going to be November 14th. And the meeting on the 14th will start at 7:00 PM and the public hearing will begin at 7:30. So, it gives us a little time in case there's issues that we needed to resolve from the last meeting, and then we'll begin the public hearing on, at 7:30. We do not have a budget hearing scheduled at this point for November 28th. We're going to see if that meeting is necessary, and we'll see where we're at on the 14th to determine whether or not an additional budget meeting is necessary. So, that's all I have.
Laura, can you update us on the branding?
Use the mic, please.
Can you please update us on the branding process and the strategic planning, decision-making process?
Sure, I'll start with the branding.
Okay.
I believe this week, the Mary Ann Rude from Spark Inc. was finishing up the very last of the interviews for the Aldermen, and following that, they're going to wrap up their report on the research. And we have asked them to come to a committee of the whole meeting to present the results of that research because it's very important that all of you feel that the inferences that they are drawing from all of the interviews that they conducted and all of the 800 surveys that were returned are things that you see as, as consistent with, it's saying the right things about our community, that that's, you know, that they, they seem to have gotten that part right because that's important. It's the basis for the work that's gonna come next, which is the creation of the branding itself. And so, we'll have the meeting regarding the results of the research in December, and we hope that they will then turn around and within four to six weeks, come back to us with the branding itself. But one of the things that I'd like to mention is that my understanding, it happened prior to me coming on board, but that the branding project itself was initiated by a discussion that city council had about monument signs. And the question as to whether we should simply fix and repair the existing monument signs or replace them with something different. And then the discussion was, are the, the things that are on our monument signs, are those really a current reflection? And I would propose, we do have proposed in the 2018 budget, six monument signs, we have a budget for that. I'm, I'm not sure that that needs to be entirely tied to this branding project itself because my impression of monument signs at places I travel to is simply that it is identifying the, the community that I'm entering and saying, oh, you know, welcome to our community. And so, I'm not sure anything more than welcome to the city of Batavia is, you know, what we necessarily want to have on those monument signs. So, what is branding? I think branding is something, and it's, Main Street is our partner in this project because they have let us know that they have $50,000, that was a grant to them, to produce wayfinding through our community. And I think branding is something that reveals itself in our communications, such as our website, the wayfinding through the community, publications that we produce, our letterhead. But I, you know, I'd, I'd like to hear your feedback on my thoughts about that.
I think part of, part of the need for branding also was, as I recall, wayfinding. The two combined came up.
Oh, yes.
At the same time. I, I have some thoughts about branding and signage, but I'm not ready to say them yet.
Sidney?
We, I, I remember these conversations well because we talked about, should they just say, you know, welcome to Batavia? Should it be similar to what we have now? Should it be stoned with something? I mean, and that's how we went down the slippery slope of branding because it was not enough just to have signs that say, you know, like, North Aurora has their new ones and South Elgin has their new ones. It had to have a brand to go with these signs, and so then it further meandered down to the wayfinding and everything else. And so, that's how we got to this point, and we're two years in, would you say? Drew, you were, Carl was still here, and I know Kevin Botterman was here, and so we had these discussions and, would you say at least two years that we've been talking about just the entry signs that are crumbling, falling apart on the?
It's been probably six years we've been talking about.
Has it really been six? Wow, time flies when you're having fun.
Are we having fun?
Scott?
So, when it comes to branding, you know, you, you can't create your own brand. You, you can define it, and the brand is the experience that people have with you. So, you can, you can manage it and try and manage it. And, you know, through, you know, your process, through your, you know, your visuals, through wayfinding, through that, I would say that our, our monument signs are, would be part of that. I mean, if you want to try and influence someone, you're going to do that at every point of communication, and you are right, letterhead, your, your signature block on the bottom of your email, website, it, it all works together, so it needs to be cohesive. So, I, you know, it may not necessarily have to be, you know, a specific design for your monuments, but I think it needs to be taken into consideration, whatever, you know, whatever we do, you know, that we've got North Aurora with their new, you know, their, their new stuff, whether you like it or not. I mean, that, that is, that's a very design, intense, you know, or not intense, but it's a very specific design that they are carrying through their entire community. So, I mean, that's something we have to make a decision on. We can go forward with whatever, whatever we want. I mean, that's, but the idea is you, you want to step back and wherever you're making a touch and as far as community education goes, you want to try and control that. And try and have some consistency.
I would hope that we get the results back from the branding in January, February timeframe, and at that time, make a judgment as to how that should influence the design of our monument signs.
Okay.
If that's okay.
So, we're good with that for now?
And the next question was strategic planning.
Use the mic, please.
Next question, strategic planning.
Yes, it was July when we received our proposals for strategic planning, and in August and September, we interviewed several firms that had submitted proposals, and we met about it, I think, last in September. And I apologize that with the couple of major projects that we've had going on, I really haven't had a, an opportunity to move that forward. But what I do propose doing is having that be a first quarter of 2018 process, and I have been working on memo just to share with all of you the, the, what the two different firms that we were strongly considering as appropriate partners in strategic planning, what each of them brought to the table as well. As well, I've spoken with references that have worked with both of those firms, so I wanted to share the results of that, too, and I'd like to put that perhaps on a future Committee of the Hole agenda for a discussion all into itself.
Okay. Is that it, Lucy?
Yes, thank you.
Sure.
Mark?
Laura, I'd sent you and the mayor that email about the dam again, because of my friend's experience with Army Corps and saying, hey, don't just sit back, make sure we're constantly pegging Army Corps and IDNR to make sure that we're on their radar. So I don't know if either of you have any contacts, he did not have any contacts in IDNR that he could point us in the direction of, but we don't want to be the last ones on the list, if there's something that they do come up with.
Right. So I did a couple of things in that regard, and I had copied you on my communications with the contact that your friend had provided for the Army Corps of Engineers, and she said that when they went into the lack of a budget, all work stopped on the dam projects along the Fox River, and even in, is it the Kankakee Dam? So IDNR will prioritize their dam projects according to the most dangerous dams, and fortunately for Batavia, we are not in the situation where we've had fatalities at our dams. So once the projects begin again, IDNR has indicated that that's the way that they're going to prioritize projects. So the likelihood they're going to focus on Kankakee, the next project that is shovel-ready is, my understanding is, the North Aurora Dam was ready to go when the funding stopped. But we do keep in regular communication with IDNR to make sure that, if there's any possibility, but, you know, the issue with our dam is, the most expensive part of that process would be if we want to have our dam removed, that's the only project I think that they would help us with, would be removing it, not repairing it. The most expensive part of that process would be if we want to maintain the pond, that's an extremely expensive proposition. I think that was an $8 million proposition when we looked at it back in 2008. But yes, we will stay in regular communication with IDNR, so that we'll know when, they'll know that we want to do something.
Thank you.
I have the opportunity in a CMAP to talk to IDNR people with some regularity, and what Laura just said is exactly true. The whole thing is all wrapped up in the city budget, city, state budget crisis, and the state budget crisis is at proportions likes of which nobody's ever seen. And so the conventional wisdom in there is, it's going to take a couple of years for things to kind of wash out, no pun intended, before they're going to be in a position to even really seriously begin to have some conversations.
So the, you know, how many times have you heard somebody say the million-dollar question? So the six to eight million dollar question is, how did your meeting go with the one Washington Street developer today?
I understand that at yesterday's meeting, I might have been delirious at that point and said it was today. It's tomorrow. Sorry.
You beat me.
But I'll be happy to let you all know how it goes.
That would be great.
Thank you.
Anybody else have anything? Marty?
I just want to, I think Chris had seen this article about, talking about the craft breweries, and their kind of niche in revitalization of downtown areas, and I just wanted to say the, Energy City Brewing had their first bottle opening this past weekend, and they sold completely out. And everybody was there and having a great time.
Yeah, it was a wonderful event.
And I think going forward, December 2nd, their next one, they said they were having some people line up last time. I'm pretty sure it's going to be like the Goose Island annual release, where we'll start having a lineup of people, and they're bringing a great excitement to downtown, and it brought a ton of people down there specifically for that, so...
Yes.
Was it good?
It was good.
And it's going to be, it's going to be one of those opportunities, kind of finding those small, little niche creative things that are going to really help the downtown.
Yes.
So kudos to the Files for starting that here.
Mm-hmm.
Anybody else? Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Okay, who did it? Motion by Salvati, second by Malley. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion's carried.